Okay. At this time, we'll have everyone rise. I want to ask Division Freeman and the Widdas in an indication and then we'll have the place to play.
Raise your hands please. Father God, thank thee for this county. Thank thee for the state that we reside in. Look after our citizens of the county of Gates. Look after all our citizens throughout the nation. We thank thee for their blessings and we pray that the county will continue with its business in the fall of motion. Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners for Lawrence, Knight, Pink, Two Sizes, and Eighteen, Two Borders. Our first item on the agenda is the agenda adjustments and there are a few of those. Under our Knights delegations, please add Linda Hoffler about the 350th anniversary. Under Old Business, we need to add Seven and Eight. Seven is about the booth ramp at Goughton. I'll update on that. Number Eight is the audit update. And then on the New Business, the budget amendments become Nine. And Ten is the Fire District Maps. Are there any O L adjustments to the agenda?
And at this time, I do not have any for closed session.
Okay. Here are no O L additions. Do I have a motion to approve those as suggestions?
A move. Second motion, ma'am chairman.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or aye, all opposed. Okay. First item on my business is under Knights delegations. At this time, we need to remind the those who are participants in the public comments, we do have a five minute limit. Please state your name and address for the board to speak to the board. Earl Reiter.
My name is Earl Reiter, 226 Pilot Room, Sunbury, North Carolina. And I closed my room yet. This is, I noticed on the agenda that we were talking, y'all were talking about it later. I noticed that Old Business, you got the swap shop, you're gonna have a report for it. Mrs. Brooks, that's a man, right, Brooks?
That's right. PZG Landfield manager?
No, no, the woman that brought the petition in. She didn't, I didn't tell her.
Mrs. Brooks.
Brooke, yeah. She, I didn't tell her about this. She called me and I guess she's glad on being the Monday meeting, the Wednesday meeting. But, of course, I didn't think about it. I knew that. But anyway, we know which way it's going. So I'm gonna sit here and see what you got to say about that. Very simple request that I have tonight. Cupcakes. Right in the middle of everything I think. That, you know, a public hearing's coming up next, the fourth, on the animal owners. And I really would greatly appreciate if y'all would all commit to the fact of listening to the public comments. Having been in this business for a long time, I remember growing up to testify at a hearing at the General Assembly in Raleigh. And the chairman came out in the hall, he looked me in the eye and put his finger on my chest and he said, Earl, you are here on my side. And I said, he was the chairman? And I said, yeah, yeah. He said, I just wanted to make sure that you were on my side before I let you speak. But we know many cases that public hearings, and I don't mean this, y'all, I'm talking about in general, satisfy the law. But we got a couple of things that are gonna be coming up. And it's not that I'm wanting to make a warning or threat, but I've been on the phone. I didn't call these people. We got on the talk with Howard, Dick Jack, and I'm not the commissioner. But there are a couple of things in there that the public, especially the huddles, do not like. And I don't think of major issues, and I think y'all can correct them, but it's the only commitment I wanted to get there is to listen to the public comments, what the people have to say, and if you hear some things, and listen to them, you may want to go back and change it. That makes sense, doesn't it, Jack? Does? I mean, you're not gonna come in here and listen and thank everybody, go home and boot on what you already got. Because there are a couple of things, and I'm, the night I knew Linda would not hear the public hearings, I'm not even gonna bring them up. And, but I agree with them. And some of them Natalie probably knows if she follows Facebook. But I wanted to tell this little story about the animal owners and then I'm gonna shut up. Years, a few years ago, a man in the county had a donkey, a pet donkey, a jackass, an ass, a burro, they're all the same animals. And he would get up in the morning and stake his donkey out in the yard and the donkey would eat and circle. Then he would move the donkey to eat some more. He didn't have to buy a lawnmower. The donkey did it. Well, there were people in the county, animal rights people, who said the animal was being abused and it worried this man a great deal. Now, the point of this story is that the people that were going to complain in knew nothing about a donkey. A donkey is next to a camel when it comes to heat tolerance and doing without water. And they said this man was abusing this animal and it worried him and worried him because he was leaving it in the yard in the sun without water. Now, you know, this is unusual. Apparently, these people complaining had never been to the Middle East or to the Out West where donkeys grow, hot sun, lack of water, but grass and when it's growing and it's getting rain, it's 90 percent water. A camel doesn't even have to have water when it's drinking, eating green grass. The donkey was not being abused. It was just that the people that were complaining didn't understand what a donkey was. And if you can follow through my story and understand what I'm saying, I'm gonna say no more. But anyway, we will be back. I don't know how big a delegation's gonna be, we're only four, but it probably will be a number of people coming. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only one that signed up for the under Knights delegations. At this time, we'll appear from Mrs. Holly, Anne Holly is ahead of our DSS.
... Lady Chair Hoffler, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Belton, Commissioner Franklin, also Father County Manager, to the board. I have the task once again of presenting the Gates County Community Child Protection Team's annual report according to North Carolina General Statute 7B1406. And record the report that you should have for coming. Before I really get started, I want to recognize this evening some of our Gates County Community Child Protection Team members who are here this evening with me, our EMS director, Mr. Lynn, our social worker, investigator, assessment treatment worker, Keisha Melton. Thank you for being here. And it's also peace of mind knowing that while we are here, we have staff that is on call to respond to any reports of suspected child maltreatment in this county as well as any suspected adult maltreatment in this county. I would like to point out on page four... under Report to the Board of County Commissioners, where it states that in January of each year, a copy of the report to the Board of County Commissioners will be sent to the division. I am aware of some changes within the division staff because I was contacted in February regarding a new staff member that requested that surveys or any information regarding the county CCPT be sent to him. So January could not actually be the month if I'm contacted on February. So there has been a change. But do know that the division of North Carolina is aware of all the great work and all the initiatives that the Gates County CCPT has been discussing. Also want to point out on page five regarding the membership. If you will notice, there are some names and there may be some listed that are not currently county employees or serving on the CCPT. This report is for year 2017, being reported in 2018. In 2019, you would have the activities or information from 2018. We have in this report Randy Hathaway, who was the sheriff at some point in 2017. And that is as a result of the former sheriff, Edward Webb, retiring. We also had Ms. Adrian Bradley with Gates County Public Services. She was involved with the Student Support Services. She also retired in 2016, I believe, the latter of 2016. Therefore, the current superintendent, Mr. Barrett Williams, has asked that his assistant, Ms. Tommy Boone, serve on the CCPT. You should see another change next year. Ms. Melanie Jordan retired last year. So in the next report, you should see the name Janet Stone Nielsen. I believe that is it, Stone Nielsen. She is the associate to the director of Alamo Hope Line. Mr. Kenneth Roundtree, you will not see in the next report because I learned in April of last year that he had relocated to Romney. And how I found that out was I began to misrepresentation, had not attended a meeting. So I made a phone call. He said, oh, I relocated. I said, thank you for serving. Then also we have a parent representative that was appointed by the Board of Commissioners in 2017. It is general statute that certain members on this team are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Those persons being oppositions, the Gates County Sheriff. And I do thank you for appointing current Sheriff Robert Jordan during your last meeting. So his name should show up in the next report and then I don't know, it could change again. Let me see. You also appointed the parent representative and the person of Kristy Conflor. Also page five, when we look at the meeting frequency, place, date, and time, we weren't meeting January, April, I believe it was October, November, no, it was December. So anyway, we weren't meeting times other than what is listed in this report. We had to change it last year in order to accommodate BMS because they are supposed to be serving on our Gates County Community Child Prevention Team as well as our CCPR. So that's the kind of relationship that we have because we have all our partners at the table. So by vote, we agreed to change the meeting frequency. Those months now being February, May, August, and November at 12:30 PM at DSS. C, this is something that I'm always overjoyed about. In 2017, also in 2016, and hopefully in 2018, we had no child fatality referred to our team by the state of North Carolina. So I want to say that speaks volumes to the numbers that we have on our team. On page six, mental health. Triumph Health Resources, which was formerly East Carolina Behavioral Health, still serves Gates County. We are in their catchment area. And our CCPT members are aware of that, also aware of the mobile crisis and county residents having access to the access point kiosk which is located in the courthouse. Our Gates County CCPT is represented also on the System of Care and Community Collaborative. And I believe Mr. Glenn Baker was here during the last meeting and he had mentioned something about DSS. Yes, the System of Care meets at the Gates County Department of Social Services the second Wednesday in the month at 2 o'clock. And the System of Care Coordinator is Mrs. Hope Gilley. Right above the substance abuse, the team felt that we need to leave, to leave this information, the need to advocate for psychiatric residential treatment facilities in our region, services for sex offenders, outpatient and residential services for the mentally ill and for a regional maternity home. But we did our research. We could not find a psychiatric residential treatment facility within 100 mile radius. Sex offenders services are provided by Behavioral Health by the name of Sand Hills, which is located out near Elizabeth Town and Laurinburg. If we ever needed that service, and some may say, well, why are you talking about sex offenders regarding the CCPT? We can also receive reports of child on child. Not all the time adult is perpetrating, but you can also have reports of child on child. And just like any adult, a child could need those services. Outpatient and residential services for the mentally ill and their regional maternity homes. The closest maternity home, there was one online and it said Ronnie, but I couldn't really get any specific information. But there was a lot of specific information regarding maternity homes out in the Charlotte area. So if we needed that service and we didn't have one within 100 mile radius, a young lady could possibly have to leave her own community to be almost what, five hours away just for that service. Next on six, substance abuse. And most of us in the room know that there is an epidemic regarding opioid abuse. It has been the focus pretty much of the Gates County CCPT. Last year, when I presented, there was a concern about the availability of Norcan, which is the reversal drug used for someone that may be in a overdose opioid crisis. There was a concern that we did not have that medication readily available at our local pharmacy. But a few days ago, I spoke with our pharmacist by the name of Brad Pearl. And he informed me that right here in Gates County, you can get Norcan. But it's not cheap. The cost for a four milligram nasal spray is $169.97. There again, I began to think about affordability. And I also asked if this reversal drug is covered by any insurance plan. And he said, yes. So that's also good to know. Also, the Gates County CCPT is aware that the Alamo Community Care Clinic in Elizabeth City can dispense Norcan. Families can obtain a dosage of the medication for their loved ones and instructions are provided on how to administer the medication. Page seven, at the top, it was stated in the December 13th edition, December 13th, 2017 edition of the Gates County Index, that as of November 28th, 2017, Gates County Rescue and EMS had responded to 21 known overdoses in that year and had administered Norcan 44 times. Two or three doses of Norcan were typically used per overdose case. Also, the Gates County CCPT is aware that there's a new heroin containing fitment that doesn't respond to Norcan, therefore is very dangerous. Such information causes individuals to think about the potential for fatalities involving children and/or parents slash caretakers of children in our county. Domestic violence continues to be a part of our caseload. May not have a vast number of cases, but yet we still receive information regarding DB. Some may say, well, what about DB? That's between an adult and their significant other. But there's a potential for children to be injured in domestic situations. A child can intervene in an attempt to try to protect his or her mother or whoever's responsible for them. Also, it's been said that children that witness substance abuse can be traumatized emotionally. National Child Abuse Prevention Act, in the month of April 2017, Gates County CCPT displayed pinwheels in front of the Gates County DSS building. And an article featuring Gates County CCPT members holding pinwheels was featured in the May 10th, 2017 edition of the Gates County Index. And I believe that is in the appendices. Diverse culture. There was collaboration among the Gates County CCPT, were trying to recruit a Hispanic adult who could assist the Gates County CCPT in identifying any gaps or services. Although a Hispanic adult in Gates County did not serve on the CCPT in 2017, Mariah Everado, who is the Hispanic Convention Outreach Coordinator for Alamo Hope Line, attended one of our meetings last year. Her along with Dr. Latonya Johnson provided information, brochures in English and in Spanish. And I'm just about done. Page eight at the top, child statistics for Gates County. For fiscal year 2016, 2017, 62 CPS reports were made to Gates County DSS and 37 warranted a CPS investigation. For fiscal year, we want to do a comparison. For fiscal year 2015 to 2016, there was 87 CPS reports. So that's a difference of 25 reports that were made to DSS and 54 of those warranted a CPS investigation. Recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners and the team felt that we need to leave actions that will address child protection in the county, continue to approve sufficient funding for the Department of Social Services to enable the provision of quality child protective services as supportive services for families such as work first family assistance, Medicaid, and food and nutrition services. Also, fund a fully trained, dedicated law enforcement officer to assist DSS matters with expertise in child and elder abuse neglect and exploitation. Provide additional safe recreational opportunities for youth to divert them from dangerous activities that they engage in for lack of other options. Support the CCPT's exploration of funding options for community awareness and education and provide local match if required. The recruitment and retention of a local mental health substance abuse provider within Gates County that would be able to provide services. During the last, last year's presentation, I was tasked to find out what we could do to try to get a mental health provider here in the county. So I reached out to our System of Care Coordinator, Hope Gilley, that serves on the CCPT. And the response was that once upon a time, there was a mental health provider in Gates County. However, the provided service was underutilized. In addition, that they have mobile crisis that can respond with sufficient time to the county. So it's not likely that Triumph is going to... See that we have that again. Page nine, other information related to child protection specific to the county. Just want to mention that we have CCPT representation on the Gates County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council as well as the System of Care and Community Collaborative. We have CCPT representation at last year's symposium that was sponsored by the Children's Advocate Centers of North Carolina. We have also met with the Assistant Superintendent of Gates County Public Schools to discuss in-service training for the administration retreat. And I was there, that took place in July. Social worker Melton and myself, along with social worker Loreta Spencer, attended that retreat. that retreat that was held at the Merchants' Wheel Park. Also, we had Gates County CCPT members to attend on October eleventh, twenty-seventeen, opioid and methamphetamine awareness training for public workers that took place at the Prequemen's County Emergency Services Building. Gates County CCPT was also aware of the Regional Take Back Day that was held here at Gates County on October the twenty-eighth. Individuals that had unused or expired medication could safely dispose the medication at the medication drop box that's stationed at the Gates County Insurance Office. We also had CCPT members to attend a leadership forum on opioid abuse at the Gates County Drive Bar on November the twenty-ninth. They targeted audience comprised of Gates County Olympic officials, Gates County EMS, Gates County Sheriff's Department, Gates Partners for Health, and Abraham Regional Health Services. And then on page ten, and we do thank you for appointing a parent representative to the CCPT on November first, twenty-seventeen. Then we have our articles. Some of those may look familiar, that looks like Dr. Hawkins. We have the Sheriff's Department. We have also, uh, the Guardian Ed Wrighton Administrator, Miss Kathleen Foreman, from the Judicial District. Then, of course, we have substance abuse panel forum. And then on the back, there are some of the CCPT members. So we do thank you and do rest assured that we do our very best to protect our vulnerable children. Any questions?
Well, thank you for your report. Certainly, we all pleased there was no child fatalities in the counties this year and last year. And hopefully, we can keep that trend going. Um, we know we have problems with, um, the drug issue and certainly we're trying to work and bring, um, some tools to be used to help prevent that, to break that. Um, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one. Ms. Holly, under Second Page, it's for the Board of County Commissioners. The second bullet, it said, fund a fully-trained, dedicated law enforcement officer to assist DSS matters with expertise in child and elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Uh, could you just give us a little bit of insight on what that position would look like in regards to, would that, uh, law enforcement officer be dedicated to DSS? Would it report there every day? Or would it just be someone who's in the Sheriff's Department that we call upon when needed? And the reason for saying that is because I'm not sure that we would have enough work for him to be dedicated. Just give us a little insight on what that position would look like.
That recommendation has been in this report probably quite some time. It may predates me. And the team felt that we need to keep it there. And being a social work supervisor for a number of years of screening and staffing, uh, reports and sometimes responding to longer staff, we would be in the office, we need an officer, and that may not be an officer available. So then, that was, we still had to go regardless. But if we had someone that would understand the, the protocol, what's involved with child protective services, it would just help make the case move a little smoother. Now, we understand that we might go a couple of days and not even get a report. So what would that, you know, you said, would that position look like? Maybe not full-time, but if we knew that there was someone...
Basically, it was trained, maybe Sheriff's Department, someone with special training.
Yes.
Okay.
Would that be for investigative purposes or...?
Most definitely investigative purposes.
Because DSS has people to investigate because they have more familiarity with the child abuse laws and all those.
Yes. We do investigate, but however, we're dealing with also criminal. The prosecution, DSS can't do. So that's why we have to refer, whether it's like a criminal act, violation of the abuse, or the serious neglect, the prosecution, we can't go in and follow. That's why we end up before a judge if we have to do a petition for custody.
Can, can that report, excuse me, Madam Chairman, that report be disclosed to the public or to an officer, the DSS investigation?
We share that, we don't get, do we get the actual report?
The information, but we do share it if we're on an actual case involving an officer. We do share.
You'd share it.
Yes, we do share the allegations.
But, uh, the reason I ask that is because there could be, uh, a little bit of a hump there, as you will, because, uh, all the reports from Sheriff's Office criminal investigations are public knowledge.
Well, we have a whole confidentiality. And our records are monitored or ordered by Division Social Services.
Probably HIPAA is what we get about.
Yes. And also, um, a judge or attorney can request our reports. But our attorney also has the authority to request a motion to quash that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Holly. And, um, you know, you've given us something.
Thank you.
Um, I was neglecting something that I meant to do when we called meeting to order. We have visitors tonight from the Gates County Boy Scout Club, two hundred. If they'll please stand, they are here to observe tonight. They're working on their rare badge for civic responsibility.
In the community.
In the community. And certainly, everybody stand up at one time. So, uh, we do appreciate your efforts and we appreciate your Skype leaders. And it's always nice to see young people getting interested in public affairs. And I hope you get your merit badge.
Thank you.
I just might add, I, I was a Boy Scout when I was your age as well.
Oh, good. Did you get the merit badge for civic responsibility? Okay, I believe the next is... I'm changing hats this time. On the table, you see a cupcake. We're celebrating a birthday here in North Carolina this year. And it's not Billy Felton, but he is, it is his birthday tonight. But he's not three hundred and fifty years old. And we're also celebrating the Carolina Charter. Uh, the Carolina Charter, for those of you who do not understand English history, Charles Second came to the throne of England, Arthur Oliver Conway. And he owed a lot of people money, and he didn't have any money. But he had land in America. So he gave eight lords to the priors, um, land here in North Kentucky, Carolina. And of course, um, our area was given to the Duke of Abraham, and that's why we are named the Abraham Region. And when he paid his eight friends this land, he also gave them the right to plant colonies, establish courts, raise militia, do administrative divisions, and the people who lived in the area would have the rights and privileges of the king's subjects. So in sixteen sixty-eight, North Carolina, I mean, precincts were formed that were become counties. And the first four precincts were four counties here in our area that were much larger than they currently are, but they were Curata, Pastap County, Bequemans, and Choan. And of course, all of those took the names of local Indian tribes. Um, and cause all the bodies of war also are named for Native Americans as well. And so at that time, um, that is the beginning of counties in North Carolina. And Gates County is part of that. If you realize that Gates County was formed in seventeen seventy-nine, not in sixteen sixty-eight, but we were originally part of Choan, Bequemans, and Perp County, which was also part of Choan when it first started. And so we are at this current time going to celebrate this three hundred and fiftieth anniversary. The Carolina Charter that is housed in Raleigh is coming here. It very rarely leaves Rock, Raleigh. It has to help police and store. It has to be guarded twenty-four hours a day. And it's coming to the Museum of the Abraham on May tenth and eleventh, um, to be on display. And on May eleventh, which is Friday, um, the school children in this area have been invited to go to the Museum of the Abraham to see the Carolina Charter and also some early maps of our region and take part in a variety of activities. I gave presentation to the Board of Education. They're gearing this activity to fourth graders and seventh graders because that is where they study North Carolina history. But it is a big deal. Um, we are the cradle of our polity, and we need always to remember that. Um, there are currently sixteen, um, counties that, from those original four counties. And if you take a look at that and think about that, three of the oldest courthouse in North Carolina are in these sixteen, um, counties. Choan being the oldest one. Bequemans is, now, I'm not sure why Bequemans is third or fourth, and Gates County is the oldest. I mean, the head courthouse is still standing. Um, so it is a big deal. Um, we are going to have passports for people, very similar to the national parks. Every county has identified two places and a kind of people to come and visit. And they, they'll be stamped and then returning their passports and they're like received something as a result of going to all the sixteen counties and viewing. We have identified courthouse, the historic courthouse, and Merchants' Mill Pond. And in October, we're going to have a program in Mill Pond, um, which will have a exhibit about three hundred and fifty. We also have panels coming in detailing the history, the early history of the state of North Carolina and the, and the early counties. So I just want to make you aware of that. That is why we're having cupcakes. It's a birthday, we're celebrating, um, the origins of North Carolina. And I'm proud to say Gates County is a part of that. Any questions?
Very much, Madam Chairman.
It's not my area of expertise, so...
Billy, I thought sure those cupcakes were for you. I just come in on the tail end of that.
He's not quite, he's not quite making the age.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. That was very important. And, uh, those dates again are May the tenth and the eleventh.
And I believe that they're probably, I think we might be getting an invitation to something on Thursday night to go see the, um, Charter. I think they're going to invite the local officials.
And some of the other counties around are having special events.
Yes, special events. And I think we might have something else in the county, but I can't say for sure right now.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to just bring to the attention of everyone in case they don't know, that I had the privilege of watching and listening to you speak at the Museum of Abraham, as part of the Gates County history. And I learned a lot, thought I knew a little bit, but I learned a lot from your speech.
Thank you. I try. Okay. Moving on to, uh, there's no administrative reports because this is the second meeting in a month, no public hearing. We'll start with the whole business. We do have a resolution, and I have it, requesting funds for roadside cleanup program. If you remember, um, Mr. Buck was here at our last meeting concerning the, um, littering problem we have in Gates County. Um, this is a resolution requesting that North Carolina General Assembly expand the scope and funding for roadside cleanup program. One of the things we also discussed was encouraging groups to get involved in the adoption highway program. I think we only have eight miles in Gates County currently adopted. And the state is generally only cleans up the major roads. So we need an effort by not only the government, state government, but also local citizens as well. You have the resolution in front of you. Why does the pleasure afford?
Madam Chairman, this is what we're going to vote on with, to do administrative things that they need to do. The second word is, uh, Gates County has a large mass of farming swamps. Wildlife is being negatively affected, potentially not affected.
That's correct.
Also, um, under the fourth word, it says that the past two years, roadways in the county have become more littered with trash and debris than any time in recent memory. Uh, kind of debate with that, is that memory on history or, uh, in this history? But anyway, you know, that just stood out there.
Well, I think the problem has been that with some of the, um, uh, business establishments that sell food, people buy food and then they, as they eat it, they toss like the wrappings and containers and it's more obvious. Um, I think, and when they can't crawl up a bike, the situation at thirteen, certainly the photos we saw.
That's for consideration, isn't it? Yeah, well, I just want to take a look at that if you feel comfortable with, uh, but that's also a couple of, uh, administrative things I have to make sure. It's in the other, I want to make sure that, uh, we don't stumble on this.
Yeah. And also, the Department of Transportation has, you know, their crews have been cut back quite extensively that, and, you know, there's no more, uh, prison help labor to help clean up the roads. And I think that's part of the reason it's made the difference. Any other comments?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolutions we submitted to the General Assembly, uh, expand the scope and funding for roadside cleanup as we spend with the COVID, uh, pandemic preparation.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, motion's been made, seconded it to, uh, concerning the resolution requesting North Carolina General Assembly to expand the scope and funding for roadside cleanup program. Any form of discussion? Carry none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, one thing, we need to be confident that, uh, as people come through the county, they do notice the trash. And certainly, it does not present a, it's not what the image we want to portray.
Bad reflection.
Bad reflection.
Ms. Holly, I would like to, to add that I was at a gathering Saturday and, um, had an audience there, maybe about twenty people. And, um, I had the opportunity to speak on this particular topic and alerted the people who were there that they would be seeing some things in the paper, maybe hearing some things from the commissioners pertaining to this. And, uh, had a lot of questions that came up. They were really concerned. They, they showed their concern for the same issue, um, at that event. And I just want to encourage other people that are here in the audience, as well as commissioners, we don't have to wait to get the word out, um, you know, to see what becomes of these letter-writing campaigns to the governor and all. So, um, if you're in the company of the Boy Scouts, it'd be a great opportunity to, to share that Gates County is going to have a focus on a campaign to clean up the county and the litter. So I want to encourage everybody who's here to do the same.
And it's just not in Gates County. I believe, um, Mrs. Lawrence, that this issue is, is prevalent in all counties and they are making campaigns along the coastal areas as well. And that's something we might want to mention when we go to our district commissioners' report. And that's something we might want to mention when we go to our district commissioners' report to see if we can get more state funding for all the counties, I mean, to get all the counties on board. Okay, number six, Sunbury Swap Shop.
There've been lots of discussions, and I had received a phone call from a citizen stating that perhaps there was a wagon for civic group to put a swap shop back out at Sunbury side if the commissioners were willing to do that. So, I spoke with Commissioner Felton and Commissioner Hawthorne, since they signed the PCG with me. I also spoke with Apollo Well and Angel White. They were both in agreement that if the county is willing to accept the liability and the responsibility for the shop to go back on the property, Alamo Region Solid Waste Management Authority and PCG were both okay with the swap shop going back on that property. And when I spoke with Commissioner Felton and Commissioner Hawthorne, they both said the same thing. That's what's before you, and if you would like for me to contact the citizens to see if the offer still stands and what can be done about getting the swap shop put back at Sunbury side.
And what exactly did the citizen offer?
They had been in contact with a civic group who said they might be willing to assist in either building or funding the building.
And liability issues, it's hard for me to understand exactly what all of them may be.
Mr. Hollowell had mentioned when he was here, the bedbugs issue that took place in another county. And so, he did, and he mentioned that again when I was on the phone with him. He said, you know, even if the building technically is not yours, you could still be held liable for the bedbug issue if someone takes home an item that has bedbugs. Because even our county attorney has told us, people sue whoever they want to sue, whenever they want to sue someone. So, that was the main liability, or if someone trips and falls and gets hurt going in and out, the swap shop, that's a little issue. But if there is an item that they take and reach that item, I mean, it's broken.
That tells you that it costs five.
Right.
But like, I don't think, you know, you would have a sign posted that any items that are placed or taken here is taken by a responsibility of those who have seen it. You know, we need some non-disclaimer.
We would have to put a non-disclaimer.
Actually, actually, the way I see it should be addressed, I'm in favor of going back, the swap shop going back. But really, what we would do is actually put up a sign saying, "We have no liability." We're void of liability.
That we don't accept responsibility.
Yeah, rather than accepting responsibility. And in other words, items are as is with the county having no liability whatsoever. And that's, I mean, that would be customary, that would be what you would see normally.
I think that we talked about county attorney should be able to write a non-disclaimer that if he posted, in like entering, only taking items from that building, you know, doing their own risk, and they forfeit the ability to bring legal action against the county.
Yeah, I think we would have to get him to telephone, put on signage.
And that, just for the sake of saving it, that's the proper way to do it. They can still see it. So, yeah. So, it's just due diligence. We've done our due diligence and make it public aware, and then you move forward.
Because, yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we give this citizen or the citizen group the authority to construct or place a building at Sunbury Solid Waste Collection area along with a sign that shows the county accepts no responsibility for accidents.
Non-disclaimer.
Okay, and someone is going to have to look at the building and make sure that is safe before it.
And we could accept that by the five inspectors, the five marshals, I think we got to make sure they were able to.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, I second it to approve, ask the civic group or the citizen to place a, construct or place a building at Sunbury side for the swap shop. Any other discussion?
And please realize this is only if that organization is still willing to do it.
Okay, any questions or any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, passes. Okay, number seven, remember it was brought up about the Gatlinburg ramp update?
I spoke with Sarah Sherman with Wildlife Commission. She said the archaeological study has been concluded and all paperwork signed. However, this agency budget has been cut, and they have been told not to focus on any new construction, but focus on maintaining the wildlife ramps that are already in existence. When I questioned her if this project would be funded for fiscal year nineteen, she said at this time she could not answer that question.
But wasn't funded for twenty...
The funding has been cut because it was not completed the first, I don't know if it was supposed to have been completed in sixteen, or excuse me, in seventeen, but they had to do the dig. And that study has been completed, so it's not going to be built this fiscal year, and she cannot address if it was going to be budgeted for next year at this time. She was not aware of the person that needed, that could possibly even give me any sort of idea was not in the office.
That was even though the funds had been provisioned and appropriated.
Yes, they had been told to focus on, they had been told to focus on those that they already have.
But, I mean, it was appropriated.
Yeah. And what is two hundred and fifty thousand?
I was never told that amount.
I believe.
I know we had a name of two engineers that were working on the project, was that the red superette that wasn't in the office?
One of them's name is Gary Gardner.
Yeah, I think that's one of the names. I have it on, I have it on my piece of paper. If, could you try and contact him? And what do you want me to do? Well, saying that it was appropriated, where did that money go?
But she said the budget had been cut.
Oh, yes. In other words, it's been...
That could have been part of it.
It would be nice to see where it went, you know, if it went to legislative salaries or if it went to schools.
Not going to the school system, not with the...
You know, that's probably right, that one tends to be pulled up on your laptop at home. It doesn't need to be.
I love it.
I'll probably see if I can get it simple, they will need it.
Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, that ends our open...
Audit update.
Okay, audit update.
And if I may go back, even though this did not have to do with Sunbury Swap Shop, I want to make people aware that the hospital site is having electrical upgrades starting tomorrow. They hope to have everything finished, but if not, it might carry over to Wednesday. So, if someone goes to the hospital convenience site Wednesday and they are still closed or things are a little chaotic, they are upgrading the electrical system there.
Aren't they supposed to also do the paving later?
Right now, they're doing the electrical. That's their first step, because they did not have to replace it. And I think paving would come after they complete that, but I don't have a timeline. That's probably something that'll be discussed tomorrow, but our PCG needs it.
Madam Chairman, just before we leave the whole business, I apologize to the board that I didn't mention this earlier when we approved the agenda, but as a board's pleasure, could county manager give us an update on what has been done in regards to writing the letter to the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding the resolution to abandon cotton chain roads?
I'm still working on a letter. It's hard. To me, the order was to write a retrograde to the state, telling them they weren't doing their job of keeping the roads, so I'm trying to find a polite way to do that, and I admit I'm struggling with that. So, I hope to have it for you by day four, fourth meeting.
Okay, the audit update.
I have been informed that I should have the initial draft of our audit by the middle of this week. You look very hopeful. I have been given a few items that they have finished, so I do, if it's not by the middle of the week, I'm anticipating it will be the end of the week that we will receive it. Once I receive it, I have to do a few things in front to verify some numbers and to write a few sections of, I'm sorry, to the details, it's called the MVNA, no, anyway, I'm sorry. It's the audit report, I have to write a portion of that. So, I have to write that and then give that back to CRI, who will then put their final touches on it and send it to the state. So, that could be sometime beginning of April, by the time that is... With all of that being said, I am going to put out for bid this week, a new proposal for the audit services. As you may remember, when we put it out last year, it was for three years. First year it was guaranteed, the second two years were contingent upon how year one went. And because year one had not gone smoothly due to transition within CRI and also because of contract, even though it was with CRI, it was at the Bell Haven office, which is the one that has departed CRI, and want to put it back out to bid. And like I said, that will be released this week. At the night meeting in May, we will have a proposal to approve a new audit company with current plans. So, we have all the documents signed and ready for new offers on July first.
Are there some new firms out there?
I do not know about that.
I would think with all this turmoil with the audit services, that there are people outside of the state that have picked up on that.
The state still has to approve.
Yeah, but I would think there'd be some of them saying, hey, there's a, there's a net worth of counties out there, and they might have moved in to try and capture some of it. I would think...
And I don't get that impression from the list served, because everyone has said there have been dramatic increases in the rates that they have received for next year, any upwards of twenty percent. I saw someone leave that there, audit next year's going to cost forty percent more than it did this year.
And I haven't talked to, I saw one, the commissioners from Washington County, and they're insane, but we are, of course, that was all twenty-four counties as well, and they were anticipating a great increase in the audit.
Oh, yeah. And that's the other thing, we need more people, we come in and do it.
But the state's requiring more information.
Correct. The state's requiring a lot more information, and it requires a lot more time. Even our current offers told us that. Due to the amount of details they have to provide now and the amount of documents they have to go through, it takes a lot more manpower to complete the audit. And you all sent the letter that I did send to Kevin Leonard, who is the CEO of the NCACC, and I said that because he and I discussed it at the City and County Managers Association meeting at the end of February, I mean, beginning of February. So, that's why I sent him the timeline. He wanted a better understanding of what happened and how this affected us and other counties, why audits are late, but also put in that letter that because of all the government requirements, that's another reason it's taking even longer for audits to be completed.
Once it goes up, we know when it comes down, right?
Now, Kevin, may I, as a member of county manager, just for, to give, so you could remind me to give you some information on who we use with Alamo Region Health Services, if you're not aware of it.
I have that, I have that, there was someone who did the Alamo Region Solid Waste, so we have that.
They've been very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hope that we do see the audit by the middle of this week. That would be good news for all of us. Okay, going on to new business. First, we have a budget amendment to reallocate money from customer service to the World Department for employees transfer. Remember, we took meter readers from customer service to the World Department, this is the transfer of their, basically...
Everything else is such a deal with meter reader.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve budget amendment number four.
Motion's been made, I'll have a second.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? This is just a simple transfer of salaries and benefits.
Okay.
We're only talking to them now. Now, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Okay, Budget Amendment Twenty-Five. This is reallocation of money within the World Department for Tiffany Fan's race. If you remember, she has recently been certified, ORC, and she received a customary raise when you give additional classification. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve Budget Amendment Twenty-Five.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, motion's been made, and then second to approve Budget Amendment Twenty-Five, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, passes. Okay, Mr. Nguyen, I believe you have the fire district maps, and I believe that map is behind us, and everybody would like to look at it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. It is behind you. You received an electronic copy of those, of that map, along with each fire district's map on a separate sheet of paper. There really has been no significant change to the map. One of the state requirements for this ISO, which is Insurance Service Organization audit, is to move from the type of fire district map that we had to make them parcel-based. And I know that may, it sounds a little confusing. If you look at the boundaries of, let's say, between the purple section in the center and the yellow section, see how it kind of has a very jagged edge now? That's because it's following the parcel of the owner, those parent parcels are now a part of the fire district. Mr. Felton and Mr. Freeman understand the fire districts are on road lines, that we have a five and six mile districts. So, historically, the maps were from that point at five and six miles, and they were just kind of biomorphed lines that went through space to join the next five and six miles. So, they really didn't make any sense. Now, they're on parcels. There were a very few changes. Your fire district actually picked up some residents on Highway One Fifty-Eight and on Turner Road. So, all of the changes that were made to the map were in the benefit of the citizens. By saying that, the district that you, the houses that you were picking up on Highway One Fifty-Eight, they will have now a lower tax rate because of the ISO rating. All of this was in conjunction with the ISO rating inspection that is due in May. There's inspections are due every three to five years, and it's been about twelve years since they've been done, maybe not quite twelve, but it's been several years since they've been done. So, we finally got a date. Your, Sunbury, and Gatesville have ISO ratings lower than the nine S, which is mandated by the state. The map also delineates some areas on the map that historically said no protection. And you understand that there was protection in that area, it just wasn't in an ISO rated area. So, we were able to reduce the amount of homes that were in Class Ten protection. Class Ten protection is the highest insurance district that we can be in. There are many counties that have far greater amount of residents in Class Ten. Our biggest area, our biggest concentration of residents are in the far northwest corner. It's, it's indicated in the, in the light blue. That area has the biggest concentration of homes that are in Class Ten. The only thing that has changed that, we have stations in that area, and we just don't have enough people in that area to support that.
And is that little blue area up here part of Class Ten?
Yes, ma'am, can I step to the map?
Oh, sure.
Okay, we have a couple of Class Tens. Actually, where the blue and the, and the pink areas, these are Class Tens. This is on Sandbanks Road, this green is your fire district. From, from the green line to the blue line, and that pink is now yours Class Ten. So what it means is nobody does there. But if, if somebody decides to build there, they probably won't because it's state land now, or if there's a traffic accident or a car fire or something, then that's the area that you are responsible to. So their response district is there. This area up here is Class Ten, but it's in Gates' fire district. This small section on Drumhill Road is now a Class Ten, it always has been Class Ten, but it's indicated on the map, the blue is part of Gates' district, the violet is part of Sunbury's district. Same thing on Blackdingle Road. This line changed slightly because in the last map, Sunbury Fire Station is on one fifty-eight, now Sunbury Station's on thirty-two, so it moved about two tenths of a mile. So some of Blackdingle Road really extended into Class Ten. And there is a huge area in Sunbury and Hopsville that got to Class Ten, but it's only because this wasn't even on the map previously, there's nothing there, it's all swamp land, dismal swamp. But it is indicated, not all of this bright fuchsia is Class Ten, but it's, it's dismal swamp, it's not any, any homes there. So it, one thing that this map does that our other map didn't, was actually go to the complete county boundary. They, they used to stop kind of empty here, and, you know, none of this was captured. So now it's looked like the county. So it was a lot of just, making it look better, not a lot of significant changes except on this border that saved those residents a significant amount of money in the Robe Dooka one fifty-eight corridor. So basically, on the your side of one fifty-eight, previously was, was yours district, on the Gates side of one fifty-eight was Gates' district, now they've picked up all those parcels along one fifty-eight, saved those residents.
That's saving just for the public, that's saving just on their fire insurance.
That is correct.
Arms.
That is correct. And that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer. Sorry that I had to put it behind me.
Well, so, and we thankful for our volunteer fire departments, certainly hopefully we can have a meeting between you and me. So, you need our approval?
I do need those, all the maps that you received via email are, are what I'm presenting to you to be approved. They were approved by Tony Bailey, the fire, the ISO fire inspector, so they are ready for your approval. If you approve them, then the fire departments can send them up for their inspection.
Okay, do I entertain a motion?
A move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, okay, a motion's been made, it's likely second, to approve the fire district, fire district maps that has been presented to us. The motion's been made, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, that is approved.
You said that the map would be sent to each individual department.
Yes, sir, I have printed full-size maps and the scale that Tony Bailey needs, so I'll have them presented, I'll have them hard copied for you, and you'll also get PDF versions that you can print. Print them much smaller, it's really hard to see in detail, but if you need, if you need more than what I'm providing you, I've got a printer that will be printing.
Okay, then one else for public comment for our second period? Okay, then we will go to the commissioners' comment, starting with Commissioner Freeman at the end.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, we certainly appreciate, and I certainly appreciate everyone being here and taking this non-boring meeting into your own lap. But as you see, we discuss things, and I appreciate my colleagues, fellow commissioners here in making decisions and weighing these decisions for the best of our community and our citizens, thank you.
Glad to see the Boy Scouts here today, tonight, and y'all keep up the good work and keep getting, carrying those badges, and just, just you be a benefit to your community, and the community can be a benefit to you also. And the Boy Scouts and everybody else too, pay attention to what we discussed about the trash pickup, it's, it is a large problem. If you just notice tomorrow when you ride any roads, you'll see it. And discuss with your public organizations, the ruins and clubs, the churches, or any organization you have, and just see if they will take up on it, stretch a room. Thank you.
I too thank everyone for being here tonight and taking the interest in the meeting, and letting us know that you are concerned, because decisions we make do affect lives, people, everyone. So glad to see the Boy Scouts here tonight, keep up the good work, and one day you'll be a commissioner too. You never know, so thank you, and I agree.
I was a Boy Scout, I was in Troop Seventy-Six, and I enjoyed it tremendously. And it really, it really made a difference in my growing up. At that time when I joined Boy Scouts, I had moved to a new community, didn't know anybody, and somebody came out my house and said, you need to be in the Boy Scouts, and I met a whole lot of people because of it, so it was a great help to me, and I enjoyed it tremendously. And I want to thank the leaders in the, the troop that may not all be here tonight, but please let them know that we appreciate their service to the youth of the county, and because everyone will benefit from it. I received this letter in the mail today, I'll read it to you, but it's from the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration. I normally look at these things and I throw this check, but this one, I opened it because I thought it might be important or something I could share with the community tonight. And what it is, it's a survey, and it's very important, it would help our county. You can hit this envelope, it's from the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, and it says in here, right this afternoon, not everyone will get one, so if there's just a hundred that come to the county, it'd be very important that we get a hundred of them back in. They can be mailed back in, very simple information, just like maybe ten questions. But if you will, if you receive one, please get it back in, and thank you everyone for being here.
I do, I would like to thank everyone for coming and getting interested in what your county government is doing. I do appreciate the Boy Scouts being here, I hope this, you earned your merit badge, and you know, you have to earn those merit badges so you can get the Eagle Scout, you have to start soon, and we're looking forward to seeing you in the paper, getting that Eagle Scout certification. I also would like to remind people, do get involved in the community, the Kings County is a small county, we don't have a, unlimited resources, so we encourage citizens to provide us services. Volunteer Fire Department is an excellent example of a service provided to all of us, those men and women dedicate many hours of training, and hopefully they now have the need, just as with our rescue squads that started out as a volunteer organization. So many ways to give back to your community, and I encourage that, picking up tractors is another way to help your community, and get involved, whether it's your church group, as Commissioner Felton mentioned, some of the civic organizations, or just a group to get together and says, okay, I'm going to do this, and I'm able to do it. It certainly, we want the county to put its best foot forward as people travel through it, and, you know, just look at it and be a place that they want to stop and visit, and maybe even to live here, and we would encourage that. I too got some information in the mail this week, North Carolina Child Health Report Cards for twenty eighteen, very interesting reading, and they give us grades, you know, and I hate to say it, we did not make all straight A's. But in fact, we have an L here, and some D's, and D's, and all concerning child, child safety itself. So that is kind of very disturbing, so we need to kind of take a look, because they are our precious commodity, and they are our future, so we need to take care of them. Okay, thank you for coming, I believe this is one of our shorter meetings that we've had. Boy Scouts, you did, came on a good night, you might have been here until eleven o'clock, it's so nice. Okay, have enough, no other comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A move, sir.
A motion's been made, second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are. Make sure you take your cupcake.